We will now call this regular workshop meeting of Jacksonville City Council to order. Council, you've been provided with a copy of the proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. And I've been asking you to take it.
Number nine off. And also, we're going to add the swearing in of the clerk to the agenda. So with that in mind.
Quick comment about number nine, if I may. By federal regulations, we cannot adopt the annual action plan until we have the final budget number from the federal government. We were informed last week that the number they had given us was not the number that we would be receiving. We assume that means they're going to triple or quadruple our allocation from the federal government. Most likely, it will go down instead. But the reason why it's being removed from the agenda is simply the fact that we cannot adopt it until we have the final number from the federal government.
Okay. So to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment.
You adding swearing in?
Add the swearing in.
Okay.
And remove the non-consent item number nine. Was that your motion?
Move to adopt the proposed agenda, deleting item number nine, adding number nine, a swearing in of municipal clerk.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? With none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. Next, we have some minutes from the March 22, 2022 regular meeting, and we have seven consent items.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes and the consent items as presented.
Second motion. We have a motion, a second by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion?
And if you don't mind. Item number seven, we are very pleased to tell you that after more than 20 years of planning to redo the four blocks from the Freedom Fountain down to the middle school, we have finally gotten to the point where we have been able to advertise, and the bids came in at a very favorable number. So the long-awaited streetscape project for this part of Newbury Street will now move forward.
Any other discussion? Here, none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. That brings us to non-consent item number eight. This is designation of voting delegate for 2021 North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision. Attending, who's attending? Mr. Jackson. I guess you're it.
Except.
All those in favor, Mr. Jackson. I don't think, I don't think we need to, do we need to take formal action on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, somebody nominate Mr. Jackson.
I would nominate Mr. Jackson to be the voting delegate for the 2021 North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision.
Twenty-two, Mr. Jackson.
Should be twenty-two.
Uh-huh. Sorry about that.
Those nominations accept by acclamation.
I sure would like to hear a campaigning speech from him.
Life is never going to be this easy again.
That's good enough. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Come down front here.
Will you escort Rose?
Sure. Okay.
Who's going to sing Hail to the Chief?
We thought you were going to.
You don't want to hear me sing.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I have the front row seat.
You trained for seven years. Come on here.
Come on.
Get up here. You don't come to any council meetings anymore.
That's right.
Now, don't worry, council's going to get plenty of pictures for you.
Okay. Jody, you want to come over here and hold the Bible for me?
Thanks, Father. Stay in my seat.
Just a few comments here. Rose began her career with the city of Jacksonville on May 4, 2015, as an administrative assistant to the city clerk's office. The city was notified on January 15 of 2020 that Rose had completed all of the requirements necessary to earn the certified municipal clerk designation. With her on the job, with her on-the-job training and the attainment of this valuable credential, Rose was promoted to deputy city clerk on February 18, 2020. With the retirement of our long-term, longtime city clerk, Carmen Miracle, and based upon Rose's experience and education as a deputy city clerk, Rose is being promoted to the position of city clerk. At this time, it is my pleasure to administer the oath. And who's going to hold the Bible?
Thanks, Joe.
And if you'd step up here for me, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you will repeat after me.
Yes, sir.
I state your name.
I, Rose Marshburn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As city clerk of the city of Jacksonville.
As city clerk of the city of Jacksonville.
And maintain and uphold the laws.
And maintain and uphold the laws.
And regulations of the city of Jacksonville.
And regulations of the city of Jacksonville.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Very proud of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. It was so strange to stand up here and take the oath when I'm used to going out there and giving it to everybody else. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. And thank you, Carmen, so much for everything, for all the training and the dedication that you showed to me. And thanks for everybody that's here this evening. I appreciate it. And hopefully, one day, I'll be as good as Carmen. You already are. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. 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 All right. So we're going to go ahead and proceed with discussion topics for this evening. I believe the first one we're going to talk about, seeing that Sabrina's out there and Wally, we're going to talk about the water and sewer rate model.
Council, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to discuss the water and sewer rate model with you. I would like to just skip right to the good news, that we do not need a rate increase for FY23. I don't know if I'll get to say that another time, so I wanted to take the opportunity tonight.
Do you have a law?
Yes. So we are going to go over the rate model and sort of explain how we got, how we came to that conclusion. Our rate model is basically a financial planning tool that we had developed several years ago by a consultant. It was developed so that staff would be able to continue to maintain it, to enter in all of our expenditures, our capital projects, and be sure that our rates are high enough to cover our operating expenditures, as well as our debt service, which we have to meet certain debt service, debt service coverage for our revenue bonds. And the other good thing about the consultant developing the rate model for us is that even though staff runs the model and enters the data, we can go back to the consultant without a fee and have them sort of look over the model for us to be sure that everything looks okay, that we're entering the information accurately. For this year, we do have some assumptions that we made while we were keying in information into the rate model. We have our expenditures for FY22 at 17.5. That is our amended FY22 budget. And then our FY23 expenditures at 15.98. There is quite a difference there. If you'll recall, we have that water tank maintenance agreement, and that is in the FY22 amended budget that will roll over to the FY23 budget as well. We have expense escalation in the rate model that varies from 1.5% to 5% per year, based on the different categories, whether it be electricity or construction, things like that. And then we project an increase in water meters at only 100 per year. So we don't expect a whole lot of growth, so we try to keep the number pretty steady at 100. Again, we're conservative with the water usage. Our water usage doesn't really, has not really increased over the years, and so we project that still at zero. And then our proposed CIP that we key in is the FY23 proposed CIP with the projects through FY32 that are key in. And then, again, in the model, we have that ARPA funding, the $29 million that is for the Parkwood Regional Project. And that is the largest reason that we do not need a rate increase for FY23. This is just some general information on our water meters. And the, as we go through the years, you can see that we do have a very small growth, really, this year. It only increased slightly to 22,326 meters. And our usage actually was down a little bit from last year, and our revenue up a little bit because we did have that 2.25% increase. And the same with the sewer meters, very small in growth, our usage down a little bit, but our revenue up a little bit since we had that rate increase. So what we wanted to do was just show a few different scenarios, even though we said we don't need an increase for FY23, so that you could sort of see how the model plays out going beyond that. And we will start with the just-in-time rate increases, which is our first scenario that we always run, that just shows if we don't override it with the percentage that we think, what percentage does the model need to calculate for each year to cover our expenditures and our debt? And then scenario two is the increase of 2.25% annually for every year, which is what we had, what we have been doing in the past, is the 2.25%. And then scenario three, we sort of backed into that to try to see how many years we could go without a rate increase to still end up around 2.25 in '32. And that gave us the no rate increase for '23, and then 1.25% for '24, and then the 2.25 going forward. So just to sort of get acclimated to the rate model, again, because I know it's been a while since we've seen it, this, if you notice at the very top, we have the water rates, and then right under that are the sewer rates, and then the combined rate. On this particular scenario, the blue and the green are the same. They are both the just-in-time rate. So you can see that if we were to do nothing, then we would not need an increase in '23 or '24, but then in '25, a very small one at .4. And then as we get through to '32, we end up at 13.13%. In the middle, we have the debt service coverage ratios. And for ease of re, brief, ease of read, I will not show this on every slide, because in all three scenarios, we don't have an issue with debt service coverage. So we took it out so that it, you know, just makes it a little bit less complicated. But in all three of these scenarios, we're able to meet our debt service coverage ratios just fine. And then at the very bottom, you can see the average water sewer bill was 6,000 gallons, and then the minimum bill as well. And so on this one, you can see that we start out with the minimum bill at 5,472, and by the time we get to '32, our minimum bill is at 7,509. So then going forward on the other two scenarios, we will compare both of those scenarios to the just-in-time. So the green line will be the just-in-time, and then the blue line will be the scenario that we're running to compare it to. This on the just-in-time is a snapshot of our fund balance. You can see where we start. And then what the rate model's meant to do is sort of spend down that fund balance until we get out to '32, and we're meeting the target. And that's where those larger increases come into play, because it's trying to keep us at that certain target level. So this is scenario two. This is the 2.25% all the way across through '32. And you can see it compared on the top line. Again, the green is the just-in-time. And then what's interesting on these, you know, the comparisons, is that you start out with the minimum bill in 5,47, at 5,472, but by the time you get to '32, you can see that with the 2.25% each year, you end up with the, actually with a lower minimum bill at 6,836, as compared to the 7,509 with the just-in-time increases. And the same with the 6,000 gallon bill. And then you can see the fund balance stays a little bit higher than what it is with the just-in-time rate increases. And the last scenario, this is the one that we tried to sort of see how low we could be in the beginning years to end up in '32 at around the 2.25%. And this is where we had zero in '23, and then the 1.25 in '24, and then 2.25 throughout. And again, the minimum bills, you can see, are lower, having the small rate increases each year, as opposed to the larger increases at the end. And then this is the fund balance, just showing, again, we are spending down our fund balance in this situation, but still meeting our target. And then I think I stole the show from Dr. Woodruff, but let him say. So again, our recommendation is no water or sewer rate increase for '23, but then to reevaluate it annually, like we have been doing anyway, so that we know what we need beyond '23. Because as you know, we don't have the bid yet for the Parkwood project, so we really don't know ultimately what the cost will be, you know, what, where it's going to come in at. And that will definitely play a part in next year's rate model. Any questions?
Two comments. When Sabrina talked about the fund balance, remember that is not the general fund balance of your operating government. That is the water and sewer fund balance. Second thing, as all of you know, but I want to make sure the public knows, the $29 million, 20 million of that comes from the work of Senator Lozera and his assistance in getting the state budget to submit to the city $20 million. The $9 million comes from the American Recovery Plan, ARP, money. So we're directing all of that money, all 29 million, to the Parkwood project. Just want to clarify, especially for the public. I know the mayor has already suggested that if you are comfortable on this this evening, we'd like for you to go ahead and adopt this. That way, it is out of the way as far as one of your issues. Remember, rates can be adopted and modified at any time. It's your tax rate that cannot be. So if you're comfortable this evening, we would welcome the opportunity for you to go ahead and vote that this is your plan for your water and sewer rates for FY23.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I thought we had diverted 3 million of the, of the nine to paving.
Well, we have decided, in order to keep this as clean as possible for financing, that what we're going to do is cover that $3 million in a different way, and we will explain that to you as we get to the paving discussion. But no, we're, we're not going to eliminate that obligation or that commitment. What will actually happen is, from the other capital projects that are in water and sewer, that money will come from your water and sewer funds, so it'll still be water and sewer funds doing it. It's just that the full 29 million will go to one project for ease of documentation.
I'll make a motion. We adopt scenario three. Second.
Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mayor and council, just a note, while that presentation took about 15 minutes, the work that Sabrina and Wally and Gail have done is literally a month's worth of work, along with Rand Assul. You know, what you get to see is, as Paul Harvey would say, the rest of the story. You didn't get to see all of the hard work. And I want to publicly commend the four of them, again, Sabrina, Wally, Gail, and Rand Assul, for the tremendous effort it takes in putting together this document and doing the analysis. At this time, what we'd like to do is begin to talk with you about some of the budget challenges in the Fire and Police Department, and then also get into more details about the book at this point. Chief?
Yes, sir.
You ready?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, thank you for having me here tonight to present on the Fire Department and some of the challenges we're facing. I'm going to begin with a quick overview of the Fire Department for those watching at home. We currently have, operate out of four stations, three battalions, or what we call shifts, A, B, and C. Those shifts are 24 hours with 48 hours off, and 27 people on shift when we're fully staffed. Contrary to how Hollywood portrays us, Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services doesn't sit around and hold the chairs down. We're an extremely busy department. Those days consist of training, whether it's monthly training, recertification, company-level training, engine company inspections, fire pre-plans, hydrant flow and maintenance, car seat installation, fire prevention programs, apparatus and station maintenance. All of those things take up our daily activities. That's all the while answering almost 5,000 emergency calls for service a year with the required documentation. Also, that goes along with, with '22 being as busy as it is. Next year, in 2023, we're expecting our site visit for accreditation from the Center of Public Safety Excellence. Jacksonville Fire Emergency Services was originally accredited in 2003, and this will be our fifth accreditation cycle. We're holding external and internal stakeholders' meetings in the spring and in the summer, and also, we expect a site visit sometime late this fall or early next spring from the accreditation team. Also, I want to reiterate that all of that stuff we do on a day-to-day basis, the answering the calls, the personnel, the apparatus, the station locations, also has to do with the city's ISO rating, which is currently is a two, which determines your insurance rates within the city of Jacksonville. Our 22 authorized positions, we have 88 full-time personnel, three part-time, which include a part-time inspector and equipments officer. We have four overhires for a total of 95 personnel. The overview, we have one chief, two deputy chiefs, two fire marshals that are in the prevention division, which also has a community risk reduction specialist, three battalion chiefs, the head of each battalion or shift, three assistant battalion chiefs, and this chart is not exactly accurate. We just had a person today accept our 12th company officer position. He's getting promoted later on this week. So that brings us down to 11 lieutenants, which is our senior drivers or our fill-in officers, 13 engineers, which is our drivers, three firefighter threes, our senior firefighters, 15 firefighter twos, 10 firefighter ones, and as you can see, 12 trainees. That's people with anywhere from a year to less than six months of experience. These are our challenges. The first one is turnover. The second one is competitive wages. The third is recruitment and reduced applicant pool. Two years ago, when we ran a process to fill one position, we had 160 applicants. When we ran this a couple months ago to fill these positions, we had 60 applicants. And then the fourth is the step pay plan and morale. Talk about turnover first. In the calendar year 2021, 13 of our 88 personnel left the department. Fiscal year 2022, which is nine months and part of the calendar year of 2021, we've had 15 of those 88 people resign. Just from January to March, there have been nine of those resignations. We've kind of run into a perfect storm here at the Fire Department. Campbell June Fire and Emergency Services has began direct hiring, which means they don't have to advertise nationally, they don't have to use veterans preference, they can just pluck from the local areas to fill those positions. And they're only hiring certified firefighters and EMTs at this time. So far, nine of those 88, five of them have gone to Campbell June Fire and Emergency Services. The number one cause of turnover, we see it in the exit interviews, we see it when we talk to the people that are leaving, is competitive wages. This is not a problem just in Jacksonville. All the fire departments around us are experiencing the same thing with tradition, excuse me, attrition and competitive wages. I believe the city of Wilmington tonight is talking about wages because of turnover Of the people that have four years or less of service, you can see 34 of them have left our department to go to other fire departments. Jacksonville is known for providing a high level of training, investing in their employees, and other departments know that. They're using it to their advantage to hire great people away. I know I'm biased, but in the street and on paper, we have the best firefighters around. You can also see, with being a military town, we have a lot leave because of marriage and relocation, and we have some of them that are just getting out of the fire service as a whole. With all the employment opportunities going around out there, there's all kinds of careers that are taken off, that they're taking advantage of those situations. Like I talked about earlier, Campbell June has been putting it on us. This direct hiring, it comes on good authority, that it's expected to continue until 2024. And also, since 2019, you can see that was when we implemented the fire step plan. I guess it would be fair to say, too, I couldn't leave without saying this, that's also when I took the reins as the fire chief. Our attrition analysis, you can see that the highest level is that one-to-four-year employee. This is when they have to maintain all, or excuse me, obtain all the bulk of their certifications for the rest of their career in the fire service. That certification's like firefighter, EMT, fire inspector, fire life safety educator, car seat technician, technical rescue certifications, driver operator certifications. Our firefighters can go and be officers at other departments with the level of training that they have. Competitive wages. Our trainees right now, which we hire everybody at, start at 3,14, but our first promotion after six months, if they have their certifications, is the firefighter one, which is 3,35. The departments around us are talking about raising pay. Kinston has just raised theirs to 35 for anybody right off the street. And 40,000 to 42,000 for certified firefighters. That's fire, North Carolina firefighter and North Carolina EMT. And like I mentioned earlier, other municipalities are moving in the same direction. New Bern's looking at it, Goldsboro's looking at it, like I said, Wilmington's looking at it. We look to see if there was a correlation between hiring trained firefighters and untrained fire, uh, excuse me, untrained employees, and we can see there's not really that difference. They're leaving either way, whether they made the investment themselves or we make the investment in them. It's harder and harder to find these certified personnel as well. as well. This last cycle that we went through, we had to, out of all those applicants that were fully certified. Now that COVID's over, we're getting back to the events, the hiring fairs, the job fairs. We're visiting the fire academies at the different colleges. We're going to be visiting the EMT class and other volunteers, trying to recruit people for our Fire Department. We're also looking to streamline our hiring process with the Fire Academy graduation at Coastal Carolina Community College in the Skilled Bridge. Skill, I'm trying to think of the right word for it, but we're the military getting out, the skilled bridge, skilled bridge program. That's the word I was looking for. But we're looking to tailor those together so we could take full advantage of the people coming out of those academies. And we're also talking about hosting training at our department. Our step plan, the majority of our Fire Department is in it. Currently, we have 53 people, 13 being engineers, three drivers, and the rest of them are the firefighter positions. Am I talking about this?
I'll take this part. Okay. In order to address this, what we have tried to put together is a new step plan. And what you're going to see in the next several slides are what we think will at least move us to be reasonably competitive. As Chief Thoman has said, even these salaries are not going to match the base salaries, and these salaries are not going to even give you what Kinston does. There is a financial reality as to what we can afford. All of these steps, you will notice, are $4,000 steps. Again, when we set up the step plan, one of our goals was to require people to either move up or be capped. I remember when we stood in front of you or your predecessors several years ago, we talked about the fact that there were several firefighters who stayed at firefighter two, but they got every pay increase everybody else did, and yet they weren't taking on additional responsibilities. So one of the justifications for the step plan was to say it's either, kind of like the military, up or out. Well, ours was up or capped. You'll notice that firefighters one are still capped after three years. You'll notice firefighter twos are capped. You'll notice firefighter threes, once they get to a certain point, they are also capped. Even though we have run these numbers, and you can see what the fire engineer level would be, it's all basically a $4,000 increase. There is a cost to it, and to implement the step plan and be competitive is $220,000. Here's an interesting thing. While I show you the numbers to keep your step plan, the firefighters, through a survey, anonymous survey, have said they don't want the step plan. Forty-seven of the 50 who responded said no. They do not want to keep it. Now, I will say to you, as the manager, we try a lot of things. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. We do know that in the police department, the policemen are very happy with their step plan, as the chief will tell you in a few minutes. In the Fire Department, they're not. Probably one of the reasons why they are not is because last year, the current fiscal year, the city council passed on to the general employee a 4% raise. That was significantly more than people got in the step. But what they're, what the firemen are now saying is they would prefer to move away from the step plan. Here are my recommendations to you. If the firemen don't want to be in the step plan, then let's eliminate the step plan. T is supportive of supporting his personnel. The second thing is they would then move to whatever cost of living adjustments you give. And later tonight, we're going to be talking about cost of living adjustments and the cost. The third is that we would, let me cover the second again. If you eliminate the step plan, then effective July 1, whatever cost of living increase you pass on to all of your employees, you would pass that on to the fire personnel because there'd no longer be any of them in the step plan. The third recommendation is to implement the wage adjustments to be competitive and do that after the cost of living with the goal of getting the starting firefighters up to 37.5. Now, let me explain that a little bit. We need to increase the salary of the fire personnel to keep them and to attract good recruits. Whatever cost of living you give to all the employees, all of the people in the Fire Department will get that. Whatever additional adjustments we need to make in order to bring their salaries up to a level that we think is competitive, that will come from the wage adjustment pool. So let me just make up numbers. Let's say that through your cost of living, their salary would go up $1,000. Then we would use the wage adjustment pool to give the additional $3,000 to get them up to the competitive of $4,000. That's the concept. What I'm recommending to you is that tonight, if the firemen do not want to be in a step plan, that you vote to eliminate the step plan in the Fire Department. Now, why am I asking that tonight? Because in order to move forward with the budget, we have to know, are these 53 people who are in the step plan going to be in the step plan, or they're not going to be in the step plan? The financial impact is almost the same for the first year because of the wage adjustment pool. So one of the questions that I'm asking, and if you don't mind giving us a consensus vote, do you favor eliminating the fire step plan and moving all fire personnel back into the general pay plan? Again, if they stay in the step plan, it's about a $220,000 hit. If it's not in the step plan, then that money moves over to whatever wage increase you give, and the balance of what is needed to make competitive wages will come out of the wage adjustment pool. Little confusing. Can I clarify any of that for you?
How will the elimination of the step plan affect the incentive to get this additional training or move to one, two, or three? Eliminates it, I guess, the...
Yes, in my opinion, it does eliminate that. On the other hand, I'd like for T to answer that.
It's also a change in our culture, Mr. Thomas. We're getting people more motivated to promote as they were not in the past. Part of the step plan originally was to motivate people to promote, but with the, me being the chief and the changes we made, we are actually getting a lot of people that are moving up and taking the steps to promote to those positions of engineer and come to officer that we're looking to develop them to.
Training a firefighter over a four-year period, did you...
I can't give you that number totally, Mr. Jackson. Excuse me, Councilman Jackson. I'll be glad to try to figure out the best we can, but to get somebody through firefighter and EMT, we're looking close to $1,000.
We'll follow up with a budget note on that, sir.
All right, thank you.
What is, what are we losing? You know, what are they going to Campbell June for? I mean, you know, what's the differential? How big is it, is really what I'm asking?
It's significantly bigger. If you, entry-level firefighter there at GS4 with their mandatory overtime that they get every two weeks is $43,000, almost $44,000.
And our entry level is 33.5.
Chief Thoman, I have a question for you. For your 88 full-time firefighters, what's the reflections of that demographic? How many women do we currently have in the Fire Department?
We have seven.
We have seven now?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're growing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Racially wise, where are we? What does those demographic looks like?
We have three African-Americans males and four Hispanic males.
We will never be able to compete with the base. That's just a given. I think our goal is to at least move as many of our personnel where we can compete with some of the other local Fire Departments.
Thirty-five. Like New Bern, about the same.
I don't have it in front of me, Councilman Sosa, but...
So that would keep us competitive with, obviously not the base, but you know, for towns around us, that would keep us pretty competitive there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what Wilmington, how competitive Wilmington is compared to ours?
No, ma'am, I don't have that right here with me, but I could get it for you.
We'll follow all those up with budget notes. You do not have to make that decision this evening. We would like for you to make that decision, though, if at all possible, at your next meeting.
All right. Get that information from Mr. Jackson. I think that's the one that's holding up, moving forward on this, but put it back on for next week.
Yes.
And we'll do an up or down, one way or the other, on that.
Thank you very much. Chief, any other comments? Chief Thoman?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is the county hiring, you know, they're having trouble with the volunteer Fire Department. Are they hiring full-time folks at the stations? I know at one time they talked about having at least one or two on-call during the day at each station.
They do have some full-time positions at those stations. It's a 40-hour position, and most of those are filled with part-time positions. But yes, that is our personnel that are filling those part-time positions.
And we're competitive at that way, at that range or at that level?
I don't know what they pay based on experience, so the salaries are varied.
Okay.
We are competitive with that. Yes, sir.
Been any discussion about going full-time in some of these volunteer departments, having some full-time positions?
I'm sure the argument has been made by other chiefs, you know, they're having problems recruiting volunteers as well. It's just the cost.
Mayor, later this evening, we're going to be talking about the information that we believe the County Commission is currently discussing relative to going to a, basically an ad valorem tax to assist all of the Fire Departments with their salary issues.
Including Jacksonville, I hope, if they're going to an ad valorem system.
Yes, sir. And like I said, we'll be filling you in on that shortly.
Dr. Wood, I have a question. With the amount of money that we are paying to train our Fire Department, do we have anything part of an employment contract clause that because we're training and spending this amount of money that that individual has to give so much money, so many years back to the city, and if they were to leave and take all of that training, there would be a financial stipulation that that person would have to pay back to the city of Jacksonville?
Yes, ma'am. We have policies in place for that. I can tell you that in the police department, what we are finding, as the chief will tell you in a moment, that even though they have to pay back substantial money, that some of the departments that are hiring are paying that for them. But yes, we do have those policies in place. It is a sliding scale, so the longer you are here, the less you have to pay back. But if you leave before a set period of time, you are required to pay the city back for those training, for that training.
Out of curiosity, have we ever completed like a survey of our Fire Department to actually find out what would keep them here, what would make them happy, as opposed to when they get ready to leave, they're doing an exit interview and they're talking about, well, this, 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 this is why I'm leaving. But have we ever thought about doing something proactively that once a person is hired, to think about what would keep you here? What would, what would be our return on investment of training you and keeping you here, that longevity is on your side and on the side of the city, that we're not losing individuals, so that if we know what those triggers might be upfront, we can mitigate them in the long run to keep people from walking out of the door?
No, ma'am, we have not, but we'll certainly work on that.
Well, to be sure, Human Resources tracks that through the exit interviews, correct?
Yes. What I can tell you...
I'm not talking about exit interview. I'm talking about the opposite, yes.
We have not done any proactive surveys. What I will tell you is that, and again, it's from the exit interviews. The number one thing is always pay. The number two reason why people are either happy or unhappy is the supervisor. The third reason why they leave is lack of upward mobility. You know, if you look at T, you know, he's 19 years old. He's going to be, it's supposed to be funny, T. He's 19 years old. He's going to be the Fire Chief for a long time. When you look at the next level down of battalion chiefs, most of them are newly hired, newly promoted. Why? Because the battalion chiefs who were there for eight to 10 years, same issue that we have in the police department. There are very few opportunities for advancement up the rank, and a lot of people will leave us because of the fact that they would like to become a battalion chief, but the two or three slots that we have are full. Those are things I learned from the exit interviews. We can certainly do, what you're going to find is it's going to vary station to station. And let me tell you why. In Station 3, which is over in Brenmar, we have a lot of hot bunking. What does that mean? One guy leaves the shift, the next guy goes into the same mattress that the guy was just in. On the other hand, in Stations 2 and Station 1, it's all brand-new facility. We took care of those issues. So what you're going to find is that different people are happy or unhappy based upon which station they're actually assigned to. I was talking to a young man recently who's in the Fire Department who was thrilled to be moving from Station 3 to Station 1. I asked him why. He said, well, first of all, I'm at the main station. He said, the second reason is have my own bed. Okay. But Dr. Washington, good idea. We'll be happy to put together a survey to try to look at some of the proactive things. I will also tell you, one of the other things, and we discussed this several weeks ago, the cost of health insurance. Many of our firefighters, when you talk about competitive wages, they simply have gotten to the point where they have to move because our health insurance premiums are so expensive. But we will do, get put together a good survey. That's a great idea.
Chief Thoman, our firefighters down the front line, they work one day, a 24-hour shift. They're off for 48. Is that correct? Am I remembering that right? What does the base do?
There are 24 on, 24 off.
24 on, 24 off.
Yes, sir. And then so many shifts, and they get three days off.
Could you go back to that slide that you showed, I'm sorry, for the years and the increments or the turnovers?
This one, sir?
It's the years. It had the, that one, that one. Just passed it.
This one?
The one after.
That one.
Okay.
And again, we're saying 19 is when we started the step plan.
Yes, sir.
In an effort to reduce turnover. I mean, it's obvious.
It didn't work.
It failed. I mean, I don't see why we can't, what additional information we're going to glean in the next two weeks that's going to help us, what's going to change that? I mean, that was, that was the intent of the step plan, was to increase retention, and it did the opposite.
Not work.
So I mean, I'm comfortable moving forward with eliminating the step plan. I mean, that's kind of obvious. That's what needs to be done. Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't know why we're, need two weeks to mull it over again.
We're comfortable with whatever you want.
Make a motion.
In that wheel, any step plan and bring the firefighters back into the regular cola.
I'll second that. Motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Question. Talk about wages. Is longevity a non-factor in terms of comparing one municipality to another employment agency?
We have not seen that in any of the exit interviews. As you are aware, longevity, you do get once a year, an annual longevity bonus based upon the number of years. I have not seen that as a issue. Do you know whether that's an issue?
Do they, I believe they still don't get it until they've been here five years, correct?
Correct. You have to be here five years to start.
Five years?
Yes, sir.
What number of firefighters do you get concerned for lacking, you know, as far as somebody to have adequate service for the so we'd have adequate service for the city? When do you guys start getting a little nervous that we're lacking the right number of people?
Uh, it was just as recently as a few months ago. Uh, we started out with four, we started the hiring process and before it was done, we were down ten.
Oh, wow.
So, uh, we're back. It happened fast.
You might wanna explain a little bit about how that affects your ISO rating when you don't have enough people on a shift or whatever.
Yes, sir, we, we have a, a minimum staffing level and also with accreditation, we have an effective response force for the calls that we go on. They require a certain amount of people. And then as far as ISO goes, every person that we can put on the scene, it helps boost our ISO score.
So let, let me clarify that. We hardly ever are short shift. The way we cover that is with mandatory overtime. So for example, you know, if, if the shift is supposed to have, uh, let's say, four people at a station and only two are onboard, we, we require overtime. Where the real impact to the fire department though, and to the citizens, is what I'm gonna call the younger firemen, the less experienced. What you want in the fire department is a fire department made up as much as possible of firefighter twos and threes and above. You do not want a fire department made up of firefighter ones. Why? Well, those are the people with the least experience. Chief Yanero will tell you the same thing in the police department. The goal of a good police department should be to have as many people as PO threes as possible. But you're gonna see in a minute, so many of our people are now PO ones. But we'll come to the police department in a minute. Any other thoughts on fire? Okay, we appreciate the direction. Would you pass this down to Chief Yanero?
Yes, sir.
Excellent job, T.
I, I think we start out, just, uh, Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about the, uh, the police department and the challenges that the police department is gonna face over the next several years. I think from a law enforcement standpoint, it will be, the next five years will be critical for law enforcement. There's a number of reasons for that, uh, and we'll go into some of them. But kind of an overview of the police department, we have three divisions, administration, field operations, and investigations. We have a hundred and eighteen sworn officers, eight SROs, thirty-five professionals, uh, four part-time sworn officers, and nineteen, um, part-time professionals. So that's a hundred and eighty-four, uh, employees within the police department. I think what you'll see over the next several years, and I think what we're, we're facing now, is a number of challenges. The first being turnover. In the nineteen nineties, we had COPS programs. In fact, uh, Jacksonville took care of those programs. They hired a number of officers through those programs, Mayor may remember that. And those officers are actually coming close to retirement. So in addition to having challenges with recruiting, one of the things that we've seen over the last several years is the loss of these officers. The baby, baby boomers have, have aged out and they're leaving the agency. And, uh, retirements have increased over the last several years. So that turnover has really, um, challenged us in, in how we deliver our services. Um, competitive wages, um, when you look at wages and you look across the country, I mean, for example, Seattle's paying a twenty-five thousand dollar signing bonus. So an officer who goes to, uh, Seattle gets twenty-five thousand dollars. Many other agencies are paying signing bonuses for officers to try to recruit officers. Cause this is not a Jacksonville problem, it's a nationwide problem. And a number of reasons for that, the anti-police attitude, the defund the police movement. Some of those things have caused a number of challenges for agencies across the country. And so when we start to see a reduced applicant pool, we start to, to lose officers to retirement and we see officers that are leaving the business. When we talk about, uh, officers who have left the department, we had four officers leave last week. One of those is being transferred, a military transferred, three of them are getting out of police work. And so that is a challenge because of the anti-police attitude and a, and a number of other things. So as we look at the challenges that we face, I think it's, it's incumbent of us to look at a number of different things and how we do that, and we're doing that today. One of the things that we, we've, uh, been focusing on is having our own police academy. And we will start a police academy in May. And hopefully, our goal is to have at least fifteen officers in that academy. And, uh, in, in an effort to try to, um, to try to reduce some of the, the turnover that we've had over the last several years. And I also think that when we talk about challenges when, in the police department, you need to understand that, uh, when, when I, when I came into the police department, we, the only thing we really did was police work, okay? And we did a lot of different service processes and we did, uh, work traffic crashes. But predominantly, our job was to write tickets, it was to make arrests, it was to investigate crimes, do things like that. Now, obviously, we, we responded to disorders like, uh, natural disasters and things like that. The, the complexity of what officers are required to do now has changed tremendously. If you'd, if you'd have said forty years ago to, uh, to me that we would have to talk about giving officers Narcan for opioid addiction, or they would have to be trained in how to, uh, effectively address mental health complaints, then I, I probably wouldn't have believed it. When I was in, when I was a young patrol officer, we had a mental health issue, we took them to a mental health facility, they were kept for thirty days, medicated, and either transferred to long-term care or transferred back into the community. But there was substantial amount of treatment and, uh, before that person was released. We don't see that now. Uh, the Dix Crisis Center holds them for about three days and then it's a very difficult process to get them into long-term care. So I think when we talk about the, the candidates that we're looking for and our, and our challenges, it becomes much more difficult to find the right person. I often tell people that there are two kinds of fo- folks that, uh, look for police jobs. One that, that search for adventure and the other ones that are in public service. So we ta- we take a lot of opportunity to try to locate those folks who have that service mentality. And the competition for those folks is very, very steep. Not just police officers, but those police officers that have that service mentality. And so I, I think that presents us with even a greater challenge. Because we believe that our citizens deserve the best. And if they deserve the best, we wanna select the best officer. Takes us forty-two weeks for us to hire and train a police officer, almost a year, before we can put them on the street. So when we talk about these challenges that we have, I think we, we look at those and, uh, we, we understand that it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's very complex. But when I, when I look at the service, the interviews and I look at, uh, the data, one thing comes to mind and we'll talk about that in just a second. In the turnover, in twenty-twenty-one, we've had twenty-eight of our hundred and twenty-six officers leave. In twenty-twenty-two, we had twenty-seven of those. In twenty-twenty, uh, in nine months. In the last four months, we've lost fifteen. And again, we lost four this week. And I think the primary reason that we're losing these folks right now is competitive wages. When you look across the board, it's, uh, I have some slides, um, that show some national statistics. And what it shows is departments that are in our, in ours, fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty-one officers, um, have lost a substantial amount of officers. But when you look at the one to fifty, they have gained officers. Because it's a whole lot easier for a small town to offer forty, fifty thousand dollars for an officer than it is for Jacksonville. Because when we have ninety-eight patrol officers, um, we have to, we have to, we have to worry about retention as well as recruitment. So when we talk about the competitive wage, it's much more difficult for us than it is a smaller municipality. And what is the impact? Obviously, it's the morale, because officers can't take off, officers can't go to training. There's a number of issues with that. Our call volume is about a hundred and forty-nine thousand calls for service. And so officers are extremely busy. So they actually feel the amount of, uh, of, of stress that are associated with getting those calls. Increased overtime, managing the shifts. It's very difficult for us to manage the shifts because we don't have the personnel that we need. The training time for new officers, like I said, is forty-two weeks and that's just a basic officer. SFST, um, CIT training, um, fair and impartial policing training, um, radar training. All those things go on top of that. So that forty-two weeks is a basic police officer. Then we talk about these other specialties that we require them to do. We require them to have SFST, we require them to have CIT. We require them to have fair and impartial policing. And that's to provide the best service that we can to our citizens. But it also takes those officers off the street and I, and again, it adds to those stress. And I think managing the call volume is extremely important. Plus the loss of the city investment. As a city, if we hire fifteen officers, we'll probably spend around three-hundred thousand dollars to train those fifteen officers. And even though we have them sign a contract, a three-year contract, that they'll pay us back for that, it, it's still a loss. It's still a loss for us for service, it's still a loss for us for, uh, in, in money because we have to go back and start that process again. So, um, addressing some of the things that we can are extremely important for us. And again, we have a hundred and seventeen of the hundred and twenty-six filled. We're at eighty-eight point, today, we are at eighty-eight point two percent of our allotted officers. For, for that, uh, for two-hundred, for fifty to two-hundred-and-fifty-one, it's about ninety percent nationwide. So we're slightly below what it is nationwide. But it still puts a lot of stress on us because of the number of calls for service we have, the number of, uh, of things that we do that are above and beyond simply answering the calls. We're, we're very proud of our community policing and our community engagement. And when we have these calls for, these call-to-call-to-call, I hate that term, but, um, we don't have time for the community engagement, which is extremely important for us. Because that helps us make our community a better place. And if we don't have the time for that community engagement, then, then it, it does challenge us.
Let me also make a comment. Even though you have a hundred and seventeen of a hundred and twenty-six, you have to ask the question, how many of those are PO ones? You know, it's, I'll go back to baseball. Uh, I can put nine people on the field. Do I want nine people to have batting average between two-fifty and three-hundred? Or do I want nine people where six of them have a batting, batting average of two-hundred? You gotta remember, our goal should always be to have in the police department the vast majority of those two-hundred-and-twenty-six at PO twos or higher.
And I think we, we look at the resign- resignations per rank. So when we start to look at where we're losing them, we are losing them in the PO two, I mean, the PO one. But, in, in PO two. And I think the important part of that is we can't get them to the PO two and the PO three. So really, when we talk, when we look at resignations, um, it's, it's really important for us, that first five years. And so what things can we do in those first five years? And the challenge for us is, in that first five years, if somebody comes and offers them five more thousand dollars, then it, 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 for, for the same job and maybe less call volume, more time with their family, because we are a busy department, they're likely to take it, some, some of them are. Now, we like to, we, we talk a lot about the training, which is important for them. We talk about their take-home cars, the quality of the, um, the facility that we have. All those things come into play. But, you know, if you're trying to raise your family on thirty-five thousand dollars and somebody offers you forty-three, it really does challenge us to say, I mean, I, to me, I can understand part of it. And, and I think it's the next slide, shows you where they're going. They're going to in-state agencies because they're recruiting from us. You know, we had one officer that went to a, a small local department and he, he told him, he said, "If you go back and tell them, I will match and exceed what you're be- being paid right now if, if you wanna come to our department." Because they know that they've been trained properly, they know that they have those, that, that training. And, and so we're, we're being targeted to some extent in that five-year period. Most of them are going to an in-state agency because they're being offered more money to go to that agency. This just shows separations in the last five years. What we saw with the pay, with the, the step plan, the step plan, actually, uh, the officers liked the step plan. And what we saw is when we implemented it, we, we, um, it started, it, it worked very well for the first two or three years. And then, as, uh, as we didn't, didn't continually address it, um, we, we fell behind. And so that's, that's what happened, what happened with our experience with the step plan. I think if you talk to the officers, they wanna keep the step plan, but they needed to be adjusted. And I think that's something going forward that we really need to focus on is how we adjusted on a yearly basis. Cause, um, when we look at what the salary is and where we need to go, it's gonna challenge us as a city to get to that point. In recruitment, in two thousand and nineteen, you see that jump in two thousand and nineteen, we really made a concerted effort. We used all kinds of things, trying to recruit people, and we got some applications. But overall, just like across the country, we've seen a decrease in applications. In fact, uh, Nashville just announced that they saw, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, they saw a sixty percent decrease in applications. When I, I, I remember when I was in college, I went to the Kingsport Police Department to, uh, to, um, to take their exam. Three hundred people took the exam for one position, one position. We did a hiring event, we got sixty-five folks. Out of that sixty-five folks, I'm, I'm really, um, hoping that we get at least fifteen out of that. And that is because when we, when we select a police officer, we want police officers that are gonna represent us and you the way that you want them to be. We want them to be focused on service, we want them to be focused on fairness, we want them to be focused on justice. And to do that, we've gotta focus on getting the best people into our department. I think that's, that's, uh, that's the greatest challenge that we have. And, and you can see, we've seen a general decrease in that. And I think over the next five years, which is gonna be the challenge for law enforcement agencies, that is gonna continue. Competitive wages, ninety-eight patrol officers, PO ones, twos, and threes. If you look at all these agencies, Wilmington Police Department, they're addressing their salaries. Uh, I talked to the chief, uh, about it two weeks ago. He's looking at forty-three to forty-four to, for a starting salary. If you look at all those agencies, we are the lowest paid. Lieutenant Porter is one of our recruiters back there. He likes to say when he goes to those recruitment fairs, you know, it, they talk about the training, they talk about the equipment, they talk about, uh, uh, the culture. Uh, he gets those people in and then they ask about the salary. And when they look around the other agencies, um, it makes it very difficult for us to recruit. So ours is the lowest of all those agencies. Small agencies like Pine Hill Shores can pay forty... Small agencies like Pine Noelle Shores can pay $45,000, or Surf Cities paying $42,000. Those are all challenges for us.
Thanks, Chief. To address those challenges, here's what we're recommending. First of all, I did find it surprising that while the firemen did not want a step plan, the policemen liked the step plan. Of course, that's just like some of you were happy last night with the outcome of the basketball game, and some others were not happy. Of course, in Mr. Bittner's case, it wouldn't have mattered to him one way or the other because his team...well, we won't go any further on that. We good, sir? Okay. Now, here's what we're proposing in the steps. You can see, it's simple math, $4,000. Every plan goes up $4,000. Every step goes up $4,000. Telecommunicators, we have similar things. We have 16 telecommunications. Here is the current salary for the entry telecommunicator versus the city. And you can see that we are basically in the lower third. Telecommunicators, we're proposing these salary increases. If you'll notice, that the highest, Camp Lejeune, is at 35...I'll round it off to 3, 35.3. We're recommending 35.360 as our starting. And then, you can see the telecommunicator 2, telecommunicator 3. Now, this is where it becomes difficult. To implement the step plan, you're looking at a half million dollars. That's not in your base budget. Our pledge to you is that over the next several weeks, as we work on the budget together, we will find a way. I will tell you, that's going to...that's going to be a difficult challenge. But, to implement the step plans for telecommunications and police officers will add a half million dollars to your budget. We're not asking you to take any action on that this evening. Here are my recommendations. Number one is that we continue with the step plans for the police department and telecommunications. That whatever pay adjustments are in the budget, when you eventually adopt it, would go into effect July 1. That the COLA adjustments would be obviously for the non-step. Remember, if you're in a step plan, you don't get a COLA. If you're in the step plan, what you get is the step. That we address compression through the wage adjustment fund, and that we analyze this annually. As the chief mentioned, when we put together the plan, at that time, we thought we would adjust it every three or four years. Nobody saw what has happened nationally with the anti-police movement and all of those things. And suddenly, it's supply and demand. The supply is low, the demand is high, the prices go through the roof.
And I may add, for example, in North Carolina last year, they certified 25...or 2,000 officers. They lost 2,500. Okay? So, that 500 officer deficit across the state, while it doesn't sound much, it is. For agencies like Durham, they're down 150 officers. And so, there's a lot of challenges across the state, and you're going to continue to see the competition for those folks to be very, very tight.
Mayor, what we might suggest, and certainly it's up to y'all. We have learned that for next Tuesday night, we're going to have three of the seven of you not available. So, we're actually recommending that we not have a workshop tomorrow night. I'm sorry, next Tuesday night. What we would like to do, though, to try to keep you on schedule, is ask if we could take a short break, and then come back and go through the information on the general employees, and then actually get into some of the department budgets. What we'd like to ask is, how do you feel...it's 6:15 now. Are you willing to work until about 7:30 this evening? That way, you would not have a meeting next Tuesday night. Is that something you're comfortable with?
Anybody not good with that?
Yes, sir, you do.
Any rate. So, we're going to go ahead and take a recess.
Please. The document session. Okay, talk a little bit. Compensation for employees, the cost of living adjustment is normally based upon the regional inflation rate. What we know is that for FY '21, the inflation rate ended at 5.1. What I can also tell you is that today, the inflation rate is running almost 8% to 9%. One of the interesting things to me is that the federal government decides what goes into the inflation rate, and fuel is not one of those things. While we all know that fuel has not gone up, it's still $2 a gallon, or was it $2 a pint, one or the other. But, to give you a parameter, this is what the inflation rate for '21 was. You have, not including the police department, and now that you've made the decision, thank you, for the fire department, you have 500...I'm sorry, 493.3 people who are non-step plan. Those are the people that are impacted and benefit from whatever cost of living. You'll notice they're broken down by fund, with the majority of them being in the general fund, including sanitation. Here's the challenge that you face. The numbers are staggering. The left-hand column shows you the percent, and just for the general fund alone, if you matched the 5% inflation factor, you're talking about $1 million. We're not asking you this evening to even address this. What we're showing you, though, is the realities of the challenge of funding competitive wages. Let's talk a little bit, if you don't mind, because we're not going to meet next Tuesday. We'd like to spend a few minutes beginning to go through the book. For the public, every year, the city council receives either electronically or in paper, a book that looks exactly like this. This is your proposed roll-up budget. Now, what's the difference between a roll-up budget and line-out budget? Well, the answer is 700 pages. Mr. Thomas, every year, gets a 700-page book. What does that show you? That shows you literally everything that the police department is going to buy in the way of bullets. Shows you everything that HR is going to purchase relative to anything in the way of forms. It is extremely detailed. The book that you have this evening is the roll-up budget. The roll-up budget has these type things in it. When you look at the five-year fund balance, and I'll remind you, this is the way the city normally adopts our budget. When I talk to other managers, and they say, "Well, when are you going to adopt your budget?" I say, "Well, sometime in May." They say, "Really?" Well, how do we do that? We do that because once we identify the shortfall, we look at the savings account of the city, which we call the general fund balance, and we decide how much of that we're going to use in order to balance the budget. That's going to be one of the things we will look at this year as you face the competitive wages. This chart shows you what was budgeted, the amount spent, and was anything actually added back to the fund balance. While we are very conservative, we're also very conservative in our spending. So, for example, you will notice that there are years when we budgeted, let's say, $2.7 million in 2020, but we actually returned to the fund balance $3.2 million. Why is that? You remember the assumptions that we talked about the other day. We only budget property tax that we actually have collected. It would be fine, and some cities do, they look at the forecast. Well, forecasting is kind of like, once again, deciding who you're going to bet on last night in the ballgame. At the end of the first half, I think you would have bet one way. At the end of the second half, I think you would have been surprised. So, everything we do physically, with a F, physically, we try to be very conservative. Our goal is to always return money to the fund balance. Where does your tax dollar go? Regardless of the tax rate you set, the base budget that's in this book is based upon the tax-neutral number. And what you'll see is all of these various ways, and in the end, where does your tax dollar go? Goes to two departments, police and fire. If you go back a second, you will notice that the police department, out of the roughly, I'm going to say $24 million we get from property tax, the police department is where, you know, the vast majority of it goes. Now, you could say, it goes to any department. Because it is true, we get sales tax, and we have other things. One way to look at it, though, is when you pay your property tax, you are funding police and fire. You can look at it other ways if you'd like to. But again, out of your tax dollar, over 71% goes to the police, the balance goes to the fire department. Let's talk a second about the organization of the book. Many years ago, probably 11, 10, or 11 years ago, the seated...anyway, the council members who were seated at that time, agreed on a certain approach. The book is set up so that every department has this same layout. It's important for the taxpayers to see this. It's important for you to see it. If you'll notice, and this is the mayor and council's proposed budget for '23, but the layout is the same for every department. The first thing we start with is, what is your funding source? You will notice that taxes and general fund revenue, $329,000. But then, look at your other revenue sources. You don't sit just as the mayor and council. You sit as the board of directors of the Water and Sewer Authority. You sit there in your solid waste capacity. You sit there in the stormwater capacity. So, for example, when we were talking a couple of weeks ago about solid waste fees, part of that discussion, or all of that discussion regarding solid waste, was not paid by the general fund. It was paid by the charges for commercial garbage and residential garbage. So, what you see is what we call indirect and direct recovery of expenses. Every department, you will see what the funding sources are. The next thing you see are the expenditures, and you can see them broken up into four major categories. You also have, for every department, budget notes that explain any of the key things. For example, in this one, while there are no real key things, you will see, in some of the discussions we'll have in a minute, some of the key factors that impact other budgets. You see the number of employees. There are seven of you. You will see that there were no department issues. So, in a snapshot, any citizen can look at every department, or any specific department, and find out funding source, expenditures, budget comments, and staff. Let's talk a second about the schedule, and actually, we have already addressed this. You've now completed, you know, a lot of the things in January and February, but we have completed these things, and tonight, we're going to hope to address some others. Talked about the rate model tonight, compensation, the COLA, and then we're going to get into budget...department budgets. What we'd like to do for a few minutes is try to combine the department budgets for April 5th and April 12th, but you've already decided the April 12th meeting will be canceled. Let's look at department summaries. First of all, in the manager's directive to all departments this year, they were very clear. The number-one priority has to be competitive wages. What we said to the departments, certain accounts that you can control, that total amount, you will get in FY '23, not $1 more. You can play musical chairs between those accounts you can control, but if those accounts totaled $100,000 in FY '22, that's all you're going to get in FY '23. So, for example, if a person...if a department needed more travel funds, that's controllable by them. But they had to find those travel funds by going into one of their other controllable accounts. What I can tell you is, every department met that goal, every department. What I can also tell you is this. Normally, when you get this budget book, we have received somewhere between 35 and 45 department issues. Now, what's a department issue? It is something that is not in the budget that they want. Do you know how many department issues you're going to be asked to look at this year? One. Usually, you will see about 12 or 13 that you have to say this or that. Now, you can certainly say that a department issue was the Fire and Emergency Services Pay Plan. You could certainly say that the impact of competitive wages for the police department is a department issue. The only department issue that is in this book for you is whether you're going to buy the new ladder truck. And my recommendation to you is, you buy the ladder truck if the county gives you the money to assist. Other than that, we don't buy a ladder truck. So, there aren't department issues. I can tell you, as you look at these numbers, you're going to find that every department...if a department issue, and let's talk about the city attorney. With the fleet of excellent attorneys that the city is blessed with, even with the magnitude of everything they do, that budget went up $2,000. And do you know why? Because of his allocation relative to city hall maintenance. Didn't go up because of anything else. And what you're going to see...
That included a pin.
Right. It did. Well, actually, he has a special in with the fire department, and he uses...Mr. Carter, you have your pin there?
I did.
Well, what does that pin say, sir?
It says, "Stop, Drop, and Roll," Jacksonville Fire Department.
Yeah. He actually goes over every month to the fire department and walks back with a pin. I'm just saying...T, did you know that?
I did know, sir.
Okay. You're going to have to...okay. The other thing that you're going to see consistently is some of the assumptions that impact every department. I'd like to read some of the assumptions. And assumptions are not actually assumptions, they're facts. You will recall that four years ago, the North Carolina retirement system said, "It's not physically sound, actuarial studies show problems, so we're going to take you from 6-point-something to 12-point-something in a four-year period." Guess what? We're now in step four in this budget, and that is several hundred thousand dollars just to the general fund. The good news is that the final payment on the 800-megahertz system is going to be made out of the 4-cent fund in FY '23. It's hard to believe that the 800-megahertz system...Chief, it seems like just yesterday, you and Ron and others were dealing with that every day, but we're now to the point of paying that off. The health insurance plan, you've already covered, thank you. Funding of the transit, you've already covered that. Fuel prices, we've already covered that. A lot of the assumptions, you have already answered. Let's look at the budget book a second. I'm going to refer to page 26, which is your budget, and I'm going to ask you, if you look at it, it actually went down, and we appreciate that. Part of that is because of your allocation of certain support. Do you have any questions? That's on page 26 and 27 of your budget book. Do you have any questions that you want to ask, or any modifications on your own budget? Now, one of the ways we're going to balance the fund is on the elections. We actually realized we made an error. The next city election is May the 17th. We budgeted $55,000 for that. We actually don't know how much of that $55,000 we're going to be charged, because when we put the budget together, we didn't realize that we were going to get into everything we... everything we've gotten into. So, we will spend some of that. We got a little confused, I got a little confused, on when the next election after May 17th is. It is in calendar year '23, not fiscal year '23. Remember, fiscal year '23 ends June the 30th. Your next city election is in November of '23. So that $45,000 that's shown will come out. It obviously won't balance the budget, but it will come off of this page, and the next election will be funded in your FY '24 budget. Any questions on that? The legal department, we've talked about the excellent work of the city attorney on pages 20, 34, and 35. And again, you can see a very, very modest $2,000 increase. On page 38, you have the city manager's budget. There's been an increase in overtime to cover the passport fare and also the fact that we are now staffing the foyer. And let me spend a moment talking. The new rule, and Dr. Washington's to be commended. We had a meeting one night where the doors locked before the meeting was over, and people wanted to get in. Well, with us in this chamber and the doors closed here, we had no idea that the doors outside had locked. We now have a rule. Whatever committee is meeting, that department has to provide a staff person to be out there. Several reasons. Number one, if the doors are locked and people want to get in, they're there to help. But let's say the doors are unlocked, and we're in here. It gives people the opportunity to walk all around City Hall. Not necessarily a good idea. So, increases you will find in a number of departments have to do with the fact that we're now requiring staff people, and we pay them overtime when they're here. That's not the total increase for the city manager's budget. Most of it has to do with things such as insurance and other higher proportionate share of the building expense. Any questions on that? Passports, on pages 42 and 43. I'm very pleased to tell you that we are back in full operation with passports. We're doing appointments only at the Center for Public Safety. We're doing appointments only here at City Hall. I would like for you to look on page 42 at the revenues. I can tell you, look at the actual in FY '21. You know, closing down our operation because of COVID and the fact that the federal government was not even processing passports. Before COVID, we were collecting over $200,000 a year in passports. And remember, we do that without hiring any additional staff. We have 11 people in this building, and I believe it's 12 or 13 or something like that over at the Center for Public Safety. Those people get a modest stipend in addition to their normal job. We hope this year that we're gonna pass $100,000. Our goal is to get back to over $200,000. Because we, although we don't issue the passports, we process the application. And before COVID, we were almost up to 5,000 applications. And like I said, very little expense. $36,000 of expense in exchange for $100,000 of revenue. Hopefully, get back to $200,000. Transportation planning. This is pages 46 and 47. You can see the various funding sources. One of them I would like to point out to you under the second line, Onslow County Matching Grant. You will remember that you and other governmental entities authorize the MPO to expand their territory. So it's not 100% countywide, but it is almost 100%. Anthony, would you mind coming up to the mic? You may have some questions for Anthony.
Yes, sir.
As you also look at the various federal grants, I will remind you, actually, I'm gonna ask Anthony to remind us all. Operating funds, what's the formula?
Generally speaking, it's 80/20.
80% federal.
80% federal, 20% local.
Okay. And then for capital?
We don't have any capital expenditures out of this particular program. That's just transit.
Right, but...
This is just planning.
I understand that. The question is, when it comes to capital funding for anything having to do with transit, I'm sorry, not transit, but transportation, those are usually 50, 25, 25. Is that right?
Well, sir, the...
Let's move on. Okay. Transportation planning, that's your MPO. Traffic signal controls, that's on page 50 and 51. Notice again, NC DOT, Onslow County EMS, all of those. What I'd also point out to you is the fiber agreements that Anthony has been able to put together and the signal agreements. By setting up an intergovernmental service agreement, IGSa, we are now about $50,000 a year from Camp Lejeune, New River Air Base, New River Air Station, because of the work that they do in taking care of the traffic signals out there. I'd also point out note number two on page 51. New revenues have been added for FY '23 for fiber agreements with Onslow County, Onwassa, and Coastal Carolina. What Anthony's been able to do is negotiate so that we put in fiber with our own crews, and then we lease, rent, whatever the right word you want to use, to other agencies. The fiber stays us, but we rent and we get income from there. Comments on that? Okay. We've been through this in a lot of detail. I would point out on note number one on page 56, look at the ridership. And what I really want you to look at is the ridership in FY '21. Remember what happened in FY '21, Dr. Washington? It was the year of what? COVID. And remember what you did as a council?
Yes, we basically left...
You made it free.
It's fair free.
You made it free. I don't really remember, what's the fare?
$1.50.
Okay. It would be great, from a service standpoint, if at some point in time, it'll be, obviously, after I'm gone. May even be after the next manager's gone. But I want you to look at the increase in ridership when it was free. If it's ever possible for you to begin to work the fees backwards, it will have a direct impact on your ridership. And why do you run transit? As a service. Now, go back a page, and you'll notice that the fares at the top of page 54, You're not gonna be able to eliminate your fare box anytime soon. But I would hope that as a future council, one of your goals would be to take ridership over money. That's a challenge, though. Because at the end of the day, you got a lot of financial challenges this coming year. Anthony, you wanna add anything to that?
No, sir.
I'm gonna let you take Jacksonville Station.
Okay.
I'm gonna take a swig of water.
Thank you very much. Well, we're hoping to open Jacksonville Station officially sometime in May. And I know that there have been a lot of questions about when and what are we doing. All those answers will come very soon. But the equipment's coming in, and we're gonna be, hopefully, ready to open and serve the public very soon. From a budgetary standpoint, you remember that last year was the first year that we actually budgeted for Jacksonville Station, or excuse me, for this current fiscal year. However, we're not really taking on operation until April. So we're not gonna realize a full year's worth of expenditure.
By the way, Anthony, what month are we in?
It was April.
Okay. I just wanted, just wanted to make sure.
It's not April 1st, so I couldn't say June. So we're not gonna expend the full year budget. We're not gonna realize the full year's worth of revenue. But, same time, you know, we're making good progress there. So, let's see, as far as budget comments go, we do have four personnel, full-time personnel, one part-time. All of those folks have been hired except for the one part-time. So we're staffed and ready to go. And from a, just a general expenditure standpoint, there's nothing substantially different than what we looked at last year. In fact, the total expenditures and revenue has gone down because we were able to calibrate more so on some of the expenses than fiscal '22.
If you go back to the funding chart on page 58. Explain the outs, lease...
So, the inhabitants of the building are being more than just city employees. It's a multimodal center, so we're going to have Onslow United Transit. We're gonna have Amtrak, and we're gonna have Greyhound as well. We're also going to be able to charge some rent to the MPO operation, which we just talked about, which is transportation planning, to help offset our local match for the operating funds for that center. So if you look at it there in Prop. 23, it's a little bit lower than we anticipated. And that's because the revenue for... Let me see if I can say this correctly. You can use the revenue for local match in one year after it's collected. So since we've only gotten a partial year's worth of revenue, or will get a partial year's worth of revenue in '22, we will only be able to apply a partial amount of that to '23. But we're fully, I mean, we're fully prepared to use COVID money and other revenue sources to offset the rest of the expenditures.
So let me ask for clarification. A good explanation, by the way. FY '24 for outs, what is your guess on what they will pay in their lease? Back in the $60,000 number?
Yes. Around in that area. Actually, I believe the agreement that we signed just a few months ago was around 56.
Okay, great. Any questions on transit? Anthony's very kind to stand up, and he's now the staff leader on the tourism and development. We're very fortunate that Mr. Thomas, Mr. Warden, serve on that. Would you make some comments regarding the TDA budget, please? That's on page 62 and 63. Here's the book.
That's all right. Thank you very much. So, these numbers are still evolving, but what we do know is that the TDA adopted an increased revenue projection for fiscal year '23. Historically, it'd been $975,000, and that'd been for probably three or four years in a row. But the revenues are showing a pretty significant trend upward, and that's a consistent thing. So we looked at 1.1 million, which is still a conservative revenue estimate, but it also allocates additional resources for us to do good things for tourism in Jacksonville. Administration, generally speaking, it's about the same as what we paid in years prior. And that's a standard amount set by general statute. And then tourism promotion, as you recall, we have the flip in place. So tourism promotion is the 1/3 of our occupancy tax revenue versus tourism-related, which is now the 2/3. So that's why you have the $355,000 versus the $711.
Mr. Thomas, Mr. Warden, y'all are on that. Any comments about that?
You don't see any expenditures here is because we haven't established the budget yet. That's still a work in progress.
And remember, what you do as a city council is you simply adopt those, what I'm called, categories. But the TDA is then responsible for how they spend their money. Thank you very much. Mayor, it's almost 7:20. Would you like to stop for the evening? Or do you want to go through those that are on this page?
Let's finish these on this page.
Okay. Human Resources. That is on pages 66 and 67. What you'll notice is their budget had modest increases. In almost every case, it had to do with what? Government plan and things they could not control. A couple of things I would like to point out to you is that, at the end of the day, Human Resources is the impacted department for everything you just heard on Fire and Police. Why? Because they are the ones who process everybody exiting. They're the ones who process every application. They're the ones who have to go through all of the hiring, and then once a person's hired, document. You can see their budget had very little change. The city clerk. This budget actually went down, and I want to explain to you why. The Building Department, Building and Inspections Department, had in their budget request a new inspector, full-time inspector. When we reorganized the clerks' department, we took a full-time position and sent it to the Building Department. The Building Department had a half-time inspector. That half-time position has now been sent to the clerk. So that if the workload in the clerk over the next year needs a part-time person, that's why you see on page 71, you went from three full-time to two full-time and one part-time. Why do we do that? Number one, it helps us not add to the employee base. It saves us money. Any questions on the clerk? Finance is page 74 and 75. If you look at the total budget of $3.2 million, look up at the cost allocation. 1.2 million of that comes from water and sewer. Why is that? Well, let me read this line to you. On page 75, part of budget note number one. "The Utility Billing Division collects all revenue due to the city, including billing and collecting for all the utilities. The city has 19,332 meters and processes approximately 18,830 bills per month." Now, you might ask the question, if we have 19,000 meters and you only process 18,800 bills, what's the difference? Well, the difference is about 502. Mr. Thomas, was that, was my math right? Now, why there's a difference, I'm gonna ask Gail to come up, or Sabrina, Sabrina's gone. Gail, would you come up and explain why if you got 19,332 meters, you only bill 18,830?
Mr. Thomas could answer this. He's the water sewer advisory person.
I'll let you do it. Go ahead.
A number of the bills have multiple meters for water and the lawn. You would have a separate one.
So that's the answer. Multiple meters on one bill. Multiple meters on one bill. That was well, really well done, Gail. Thank you very much. But that's the reason why over one-third of this budget is charged to water and sewer. But those are also the same people who collect the solid waste fund and the stormwater fund. Because remember, it all goes out as one utility bill. And then, of course, Gail and her staff upstairs, they do what? All the financial work for every department. So cost allocation almost recovers, I would guess about 44% of the budget is recovered from other funds, not just from the general fund. If you look at note four on page seventy-five. As you know, we do not appraise, appraise property, nor do we send out the tax bills. The county is very gracious. They do that free for us. I'm sorry. Let me correct that. "The city pays Onslow County to bill and collect our property taxes. This fee is 1% of collections, up to 95%, and then 5% for anything above 95%. First of all, publicly, I want to commend the County Commission and the Tax Office for the work they've done over the last four years to significantly increase collections. We do not have the tax unpaid bills that the county wants faced. That has benefited the city. So we do pay, and in the current year, we estimate $268,438 will be paid by the city for that service." And I will tell you, you could never hire the staff. We are fortunate that we have that relationship with the county. "The city also pays the state of North Carolina a fee to collect, to collect property taxes on automobiles. This coming year, a little over $81,000." And again, we're thankful that they do. Because for, if you combine those two, you're up to roughly $349,000 or something like that. We get all that services. And of course, you can see 25 people in that department.
Do we have one question on this? Gail, on the finance department, I see the funding source of the tourism and development administration fees, funding source is 21,000?
That's the administration fee that's in the law. It's 3% of the first 500,000 and 1% above that, I believe, is the calculation.
But then on the TDA, our administration fees are 37,000?
That 37,000 includes the audit, insurance, a couple of other administrative items.
Thank you.
Those questions were brought to you by the chairman of the TDA. That was good.
Make sure she speaks that.
Your honor. Let's talk about metering. Page seventy-nine, the first note. "The city currently has 50-meter reading routes in five cycles containing 19,332 meters." And Mr. Thomas, I made absolutely certain, because I knew you were going to cross-check wherever the number of meters was, it would balance. And I can assure you that with the help of Gail and Caroline Lamp, every place you read the number of meters, it's 19,332. But I'll also tell you this, the first draft of this book had three different numbers in it. So Gail said, "We got to correct that for..." Let's talk about Budget Note Two. "The metering budget contains 108,000 for the replacement of the encoder-receiver transmitters, commonly referred to as ERTs. We stood in front of you last year and the year before and asked you to put this money in so we could begin to systematically replace them all. Look at how successful we've been. In FY twenty-one, we replaced 810, and we've replaced 574 through February. Now, with 19,332 meters, why haven't we been more successful? Because you can't get them. Before COVID, we had no problem getting a shipment of 500 and installing them and getting another shipment. It's in the budget, but don't expect $100,000 to actually be spent unless the manufacturing companies find people and get back to work and the transportation system is able to deliver them. You know, again, we had hoped that those numbers would be substantially higher. It's like anything else. If it's not on the shelf, you can't take it home. Any questions on metering?
What is a GPS tremble system?
That's a system that Ron Massey knows a lot about.
Yes, I was, I was hoping this would be able to answer this one.
Those are GPS units to geolocate. They use them to go out and actually get the geo-coordinates for where the meters are located, so when they get buried, they can go out and find them in that. So it's, it's a GPS unit. Surveyors use that. You can get them at different, different accuracy levels. This isn't the accuracy level that a surveying company would use, but they use GPS satellites to physically identify the location where the unit is actually sitting.
You know, many years ago, the meter reader actually had to find the box, open it up, look at the dials, and read. It's amazing, with technology, we no longer need that. But there actually are one or two, maybe a few more of our customers, who believe if they had the box, they'll never get a bill because you weren't able to read it. That's the reason why, as Mr. Massey just accurately said, it's a GPS locator. If I'm not mistaken...
I thought the tremble was a misspelling.
What did you think it stood for, sir?
That's a good question.
That's a good question. I'll put that out as a budget note for you to answer for the next minute. Any other questions on metering? Let's make this the last for tonight, if that works for you, and that's fleet. Remember, fleet is a inter-service fund, an internal service fund. Depending on how many vehicles you have, your department pays a percent. So if you're someone like the police department that has, Mike, how many vehicles do you have? Okay, 146. Or if you're the fire department, T?
I can't give you that intro.
Okay. Got to bone up on these things, man. Okay. Your support of the fleet department is based upon the overhead allocation to you. There are 641 vehicles or pieces of equipment which make up the city fleet. 641. That's everything from a fire ladder truck all the way down to a police car, to even a trailer. Twelve people, Ed and his people do a fabulous job. You can see their budget. And again, that budget is spread through all. This budget also reflects the decisions that you have already made on gasoline prices. Any questions on fleet?
What's the appropriated fund balance for?
It's just the difference between the estimated revenue.
I'm sorry?
It's just the difference between the estimated revenue and expenses.
Okay.
They don't have their own separate fund balance, do they? They do.
It's not much. They pretty much spend what they, what they bring in, because they buy a part and then they charge the department for the part. So there's not, there's some markup to cover the labor.
Let me correct something I said. Budget Note Three in here is incorrect. What it says is for FY twenty-three, the estimated price of fuel remained the same, unleaded and so forth. That is not a correct number. We will go back. My understanding is that the financial numbers have been updated to show the decisions you made, but that Note Three is inaccurate. You made the decision to go with 355 for unleaded and 390 for diesel. So we will verify that the actual finances have also been updated. Appreciate your patience and allowing us to do this in kind of unexpected way tonight. Do you have any questions about anything we've covered? We will not have a meeting on April the 12th, but your next meeting will be on April 19th. For the public, there will be a public hearing on the budget. That public hearing is not intended to show the public your final budget. It is intended for the public to come and make any comments to the mayor and council regarding things that they would like to have placed in the budget, priorities, or any comments that they may make. Thank you very much for your courtesy. I believe we have a one-city moment, sir. T, you want to come up and narrate this?
Came into the pot there. Friday, yes, sir, excuse me. Friday, two weeks ago, at Station One, we had a swear-in for our eight new firefighters for Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services, where we pinned their badge with their family present for them to take their oath, and they rang the fire bell to officially start their service with Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
Any comments about that lineup, T?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Motion for adjournment.
All in favor?